Let's go. Thank you for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Work Session on Tuesday, October 17th, 2017. This time, we will move to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapadus?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great, thank you very much. That'll take us to the agenda items. Item 3.1 is the Mayor and Council Show Review Items on the Regular City Council Meeting Agenda. Council, before I move to you for any questions, concerns, I want to go to the consent agenda. The city clerk has approached me and told me that we need to table item 9.3 due to some incorrect language on there, and so if you don't have any problems with that, we're going to go ahead. I don't know if we can table it right now, but we just want to announce that that's what we're going to do when we get to consent, so we'll table 9.3, okay? So, Council, any questions or concerns on the regular City Council Meeting Agenda? And Nancy, if I forget you throughout the evening, my apologies. Go ahead and just speak up and we'll stop everything for you.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
On 9.3, isn't that for Dexter Martin?
No.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I can't hear you. Can you read the question?
I was trying to figure out what 9.3 was.
It's the body worn cam.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'm in the wrong agenda.
Yeah, no, it was just a, it was an error in the clerical side of it, and so we're just going to postpone it. Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and move on here to item 3.2, the Mayor and City Council Show Reports on Meetings and/or Conferences Attended by the Council. So, Council, the time is yours. Any reports for the audience at this time? Councilmember Chapadus.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Saturday, I was present at the Maricopa Police and Pinellas County Attorney's Office Shred-a-thon and Prescription Drug Disposal Surrender Program. We filled a truck with stuff that we called some of our files. We had people that came back two and three times, so it was a very successful event, and I just wanted to thank the Pinellas County Attorney's Office and our own Maricopa PD. Thank you.
Perfect. Anyone else? Councilmember Manfredi?
I currently have four boxes of files in the back of my car I was supposed to bring that day. When's the next one?
Maybe one to two a year, so we'll get back to you.
We'll send you a memo. Anyone else at this time? I think Councilwoman Gussi posted it. I posted it, so certainly you knew.
I know. I just didn't make it on time.
All right. All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to item 3.3, the Mayor and City Council Show Here Presentation from Sustainability Partners. This is for discussion and direction.
Mayor and Council? I'm Rick Gibson, City Manager, City Attorney. Hello, everyone, tonight. I'm with Sustainability Partners, and we're going to make a presentation tonight. We want to make sure to make this as open-ended as good for the group, so feel free to ask me questions, or we can do questions at the end. And while there are a number of slides, I won't read them, and I won't force you to, you know, to look at anything for too long. I just would like to bring some concepts today. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Good, good, good. So, let's get started. The name of the company is Sustainability Partners. We're known as the cloud utility. What that means is we're kind of a utility that provides the equipment, not the gas, electricity, or water, but we provide the equipment for you in the same way that a utility company provides its services. So, we want to focus here on helping reduce the cost of ownership and operating risks, and so that the City of Maricopa can turn its attention to things that are always even more important to it. So, we fund big projects for city schools and hospitals, and our money comes from Wall Street. We help you keep your heating, air conditioning, lighting, and water systems brand-new. You get to use the same contractors, and we don't dictate contractors or product. You know, of course, we like the best stuff possible, but we also bring finance and engineering expertise, but we're sort of helping you reduce your risk in those things. So, this is just a slide I threw in here. There won't be a test on it, but the question sometimes comes up, and also, don't try to memorize it, it's fairly weighty. The question comes up as to, well, where does the money come for this sort of thing that we're bringing? Well, of course, our investors are backing it, but more important, the money comes from, right now, there are some devices, equipment, that are kind of within the city that are old and need to be replaced. Now, if we could wave a magic wand, we would just simply have new stuff everywhere, but since that costs a lot of either debt or money of some kind, a lot of those things don't get replaced. So, but what we do is we come in and replace everything that you want replaced that does need replacing. What that does is it brings the energy and water costs down. In my parlance, that kind of is like a whole new currency. So, it's not new debt, it's not raising a bond, it's not spending money, and that's probably, of everything I'll say tonight, something that's really important. And I have to say, even though there will be competition for this, this is kind of a new thing. So, we often get, "Well, but I've never heard of this before." We've been functioning for about three years, we've got projects on the way, and we were introduced to City of Maricopa, and we thought... So, moving along, just to sort of, to get along the way, we're not, what we're not is another equipment provider. We're not, you might have heard of energy-saving companies or shared other ways to get equipment in where you share savings, or just simply financing. We're not any of those. I think most importantly is we're a way where, without using debt, where, because it's not debt for you, we're a way for you to actually pay for what you use for. For instance, if a boiler is being used 100 hours a month, we actually have an hourly or per-kilowatt charge per month, and it gives you a chance, for instance, if that month you're not using as much, the rate is actually lower. It's not just a financing payment, which is the same every single month. So, we are kind of like an inside utility, and we provide things, we bring them to you, like lighting, HVAC, water, motors and pumps. You only pay for what you use. And here's something that also takes some getting used to. Like your utility provider, you'd actually be able to cancel, terminate our agreement on a 30-day notice with no penalty. Now, it sounds like a pretty, and we can go into detail, but I won't belabor that, but that's why it is, it ends up being off-balance sheet, because in even broad financial terms, there's no forward obligation. Paying us, we're actually right where you would pay on your profit and loss. It would be right where you would pay another electrical supplier, a gas supplier, a water supplier, because you're paying us for what you use. And it is a new concept, which we can always get into detail on. We, and there's a lot on this slide, I certainly won't read it, but the idea is you get to use primary suppliers, the regular installers that you like. We add in our management and measurement tools. We're very keen on risk mitigation, so of course, everything is funded. And our money comes from companies from Wall Street, like Brookfield, Hastings, Allianz, Goldman Sachs, that we have a pool of capital which we get from them, and it actually makes it a low cost of capital. So, unlike a lot of other ways, like when you buy something or you lease something, I'm sure you've seen these 50- or 200-page agreements for financing, and our legal folks have to spend hours, if not days, and weeks. Our agreement is a simple service agreement. It's not a financing agreement, it's not a lease agreement at all. It's a simple service agreement which says, "We're going to put this stuff in, you get to use it, you pay us for what you use. If you want to terminate, you can. If at any time you ever decide you'd like to buy it out, you can." And then for each, so that's our basic terms and conditions. And then for each project, we do, we do a simple three-page agreement which describes that project, but once we have the original agreement, once we're done with that, then each project just becomes an addendum, and we say, "Okay, we want to do lights in those buildings over there. We want to place boilers in another." That would just be a simple three-page agreement, which it really should be easier than having to do a new agreement with a new supplier every time. So, your options are always open. You can continue with us, you could buy it out. After 10 years, you can buy it out for a dollar, or if you wanted to, and we don't think you'll want to, because the arrangement is pretty good, but you could terminate if, at any time, something comes up and you want to. So, we do all kinds of projects. I've sort of alluded to them, lights and waters and pumps and motors, HVAC, which is probably the biggest category. We, for reference customers, Point Loma University in San Diego, another elementary school in California. We have a very big project with a group of Illinois community colleges, and we've committed $50 million for their group. We have other projects, and you'll note names on here, some of them are familiar, some are not. We're actually, one of our biggest names is NASA, which we'll have a program with them coming up. Now, this is, I'm going to show you some of our magical secret sauce, something that we use to analyze every project, and you can see that you're not supposed to be able to read that, but our calculator system is one in which we calculate all of your inputs, everything that goes on within the city when it comes to its projects. We put it in here so that we can know what your labor costs are, what your warranties are like, how long you keep equipment, what your preferences are in terms of how long you run equipment, and this is not meant to be readable. I want to just tell you that this is what, it's about this big if you put it in full size. But, what we have is, we use your actual operating numbers, and we compare what we are going to charge you to other options, like if you did a loan, if you did a lease, if you did a bond, and we're going to show you how that works. We focus very much on the total cost of ownership. It's not just how much energy you're saving, it's actually what energy costs, maintenance costs, product replacement, upgrades, procurement, all those things, and what we're trying to do is also help you avoid the big emergency pileups when something really important breaks, and then everything is like three times as expensive, and that's not good. So, with the projects we do, sometimes you're break-even on them, meaning that what you're saving is what you're paying us. In some cases, there might even be, to the left, there might be some positive cash flow which you could use for another project. Once in a while, there's a lot of positive cash flow which you can use another project, but to the right, that sort of beige-at-1 o'clock box, there are some projects which may actually have an extra cost to you, but when you compare it to how, and we'll show you that, when you compare it to how else you can obtain it, you think, "Well, this is actually more economical than if we did a lease or a loan." And then occasionally, there'll be something that is greatly expensive. We, you know, we're not bragging about that, but it may be a project where there's no better way for the city, for the town, and City of Maricopa to acquire it, and it actually might be a good option. So, we have a full range of, depending on the project, every project is scoped out. Here's an example, and again, you know, you won't be expected to read this, let alone memorize it, but we show here what payments would be. This is a pretty big project of lighting. This is easier to see. The blue line is us, and that's where we're basically showing total cost of ownership, and you can see the years along the bottom. So, if you're going to go run to fail, which is expensive, or if you're going to purchase it, that's the green bar, and then we're blue. Another project, another lighting project, again, a bunch of numbers, but here's another example of the graph for that project. So, what we're saying is, in a much easier work session, you know, more closely with your people, we can show you how projects that City of Maricopa would do. We'll take your project specifically. And oddly enough, we're done. So, thank you for your patience. I know there's a lot to absorb and all that, but I appreciate. So, I'm open for questions.
So, Council, I'll turn it over to you for questions. Again, that's a lot of information. I just want to give you some feedback here. So, we had the opportunity here several months ago to meet with these folks and just start talking about, you know, how does this apply to us? Is there a value here? Is it worth exploring? We certainly felt strongly about bringing this to a council work session and introducing the concept, and as has been explained, you know, it's trying to take something very complex and boil it down into something that's easy to understand, but really, the understanding is, is that when you're looking at old infrastructure or deteriorating infrastructure, or things that just need to be updated in the infrastructure, and the thing that kind of comes to my mind is, you know, let's take halogen lights at the ballfields, right? I mean, we were this close to be able to put LED lights in there, but they were just out of our price reach when we built Copper Sky, and yet, you know, that's something that instantaneously would create savings to everyone who rents the fields, who uses them, et cetera. And then, you know, our questions to them were, "Well, wait a second. You know, we are fairly a new city and new facility, so is there anything that could really be done?" And the thought was, is bring this, you know, to you all and to kind of introduce it, and then kind of, if you wanted to, turn them loose on Maricopa from an investigative standpoint, you know, to things that are owned by the city and the city has control over, to look at, could savings be attained through a process like this? Is there, are there things specifically that would align with what we need or might need with what they do, and is there a value proposition there? Again, the idea to see if there's a savings, or certainly an updating of equipment, because like a lease, it's not a lease, but like a lease, you know, the beauty of a lease is that when you turn it back in, you get something brand-new again, right? So, you're always staying on top of that newest technology, and that's, so again, this is not a lease, but I want you to equate the fact that having something new all the time is also beneficial to the investors on Wall Street here, because they want to be realizing these savings just like we do. So, you have a vested interest in both sides, but, so again, this came from relationships that were built. Eoanamorfessis has relationships and said this is something we should probably take a look at, just to investigate, and that's why we're here today. So, I, you probably have tons of questions and maybe none all at the same time, because it is fairly complex, but I just wanted to give you the history there so that you understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Can I add in one thing?
Absolutely.
And just, it shouldn't be advice, because I don't know your, how hard your jobs are, but one of the things to look at this is where we say, "Let's find some projects where stuff needs to be replaced," I'll just call it "stuff," and where we can do it, and we can show you how that works out economically. What that does, if that's $1 million, or $10 or $20 million, whatever that number is, what that does is give the city a chance to use that money on other things, and we know how precious money is. Money's really expensive these days. So, what we're, what we can do with that is, and the main thing that matters with all that, and it's not just more debt, so it's not where you're going to be paying interest and have an obligation, and we can certainly go into how that all works specifically, but of course, if the city could just borrow, you know, way up here, then the city could fix everything in its dreams, but because this isn't debt, because it's kind of like creating a new source of money that doesn't, isn't a debt instrument, and it doesn't go on your balance sheet, and it doesn't affect your credit capacity to, you know, to use it elsewhere, it kind of becomes a new source, and that's why I think it's worth thinking about.
Yes, Councilmember Wade, Councilmember Chapadus.
Thank you very much for the presentation. At what point do the investors realize their investment? How does that work?
Oh, our investors?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's typically around five or six years, and so we hope, although we can't, we can't require you to, we hope that you stay with our program for longer, but that's our, in a way, it's a marketing expense for us to offer this off-balance sheet and hope that it becomes attractive over time, and that you get used to putting more money into police, excuse me, police and fire and other things that are more particular, and let us do the infrastructure stuff that is less in the core business.
Councilmember Chapadus.
Mr. Gibson, I have several questions. As part of your initial evaluation of the city assets, do you perform what, in my experience, on an HOA level would almost be like a reserve study, so predicting the lifespan of a particular asset, given us worst-case, best-case, middle-case scenarios for replacement or repair, that kind of thing, or is that something you expect the city to provide at any time?
No, to begin with, we don't expect you to do that or pay for that at all. What we would do is sit down with your experts and say, "What are the biggest problems that come up?" And then we would focus, we wouldn't do a complete overall audit of the whole city, but we would say, for instance, "What are the top 10 projects that are troublesome for the city, that are keeping everyone up at night?" And with those, then we would then focus on those five or six or 10 projects, whatever was right, and then we would do a complete analysis at our expense. So, we never, we only charge a usage fee, and that's, you know, which we'll show you in our analysis, but we never charge for audits or studies or, and you never pay for the equipment itself. It's just per-kilowatt hour, per day, like that.
Okay. In terms of tracking and reporting, what kind of statistical analysis is available to the city, so it's not just the equipment, but maybe our, you know, ongoing maintenance and operation cost and that kind of thing?
Right. Well, we meter everything we put in, and we would actually have metering not only at the panel level, but also at a device level at each thing we put in, and then we provide the city a dashboard where you can see exactly what the usage fees, usages are, and in some cases, that's going to be information that hasn't been that easy to get, you know, before, so it actually may be new information, new helpful information.
And that's in real time?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
It's on a website in real time, yeah.
What, how would this apply to the city being in the planning stages for a future capital expenditure, capital improvement? Let's say we want to build a new building. Could you come in and offer as part of the planning and design aspects ways that we could save money? The mayor alluded to a specific project with LED lighting.
Mostly what we're doing right now is retrofit.
Okay.
So, I do want to say that we have an eye on, in about a year or so, to be doing some new build, and the reason we primarily do retrofit is it's easier to show the benefit to you. It's harder if we're just competing with just a cost of money. That's why things like maintenance and upgrades and replacements, all those things are more, are bigger factors in things like retrofits, and less of a concern with something where it's a brand-new build.
Okay. And my last question was something you said that we have the capability to terminate the agreement in 30 days, but explain to me how buyout works.
Okay. So, in our, I mentioned that there's a master agreement, and then there's an addendum for each project. In the addendum, there's actually a one-year, two-year, three- every year, a yearly number for what the actual buyout number would be at any time between one and 10 years. Each year, it changes, it goes down. And then, also, I mentioned that at 10 years, that it would be your option to buy it at, buy it out at $10. But I do have to say that as we get to know each other, we'll start, we'll recommend, and it's totally that you probably want to not buy it out. The main thing is, then you'll end up with 10-year equipment that you own, and you're going to be back to where you are today, but you do have the option. And the reason we do that is because we don't want you to be afraid of our agreement. It's frankly, that's a price we pay to make sure that this really is risk, you know, risk abatement.
So, the initial master agreement is a minimum of 10 years? Is that the norm?
Well, it really doesn't have a 10-year term. It's actually legally a month-to-month agreement, and it's as long as you want to keep it. So, you can terminate, you know, even much earlier if you wanted to. We don't think you will, but there's no requirement to last, to go for three years or 10 years. It really isn't there. It's kind of like once, once you get used to it, you're going to prefer it to owning, and so why would you want to own? I mean, this is, this is what we see around the country, that it is a new way of looking at it, but there are things that are great for a city to own, and a lot of the infrastructure is not so good for a city to, you know, not financially positive.
I see on your slides that you mentioned the City of North Las Vegas. Have you done it for any other municipality?
Yeah, a good example, and it's a giant municipality, is Galveston, and we have very good references there, and we've done almost like something of everything for them. That's why it's, and it was one of our earlier projects, that's another example.
Does Galveston have any city-owned utilities?
I don't know.
Okay.
I probably could find, I mean, I could find out. I just, Galveston was not a project that I personally was involved with, and it's definitely one, though, that was a pretty big project for us, but I don't know.
Okay. So, it's not, it's not out of the norm for you to be working with non-city-owned utility companies, other service providers?
Yeah, and for utility companies, you know, it does help, part of their mission, which is to make things more efficient, and in fact, a lot of the rebates that they give go along and actually become part of our equation for what we're charging usage-wise. So, what, utilities often will give some kind of rebate that'll lower the baseline number, and that means that the cost to City of Maricopa actually goes down somewhat because of the utility cooperation.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Wade.
Yeah, I have one more question. Can you kind of give us an example of what a usage fee is and how it would be assessed?
Yeah, so here's what happens. What we do, and let's, let me say it's a million-dollar project, for lack of a better reference, and the million-dollar project is to do a bunch of boilers in a building. So, what we'll do, and we'll show this, and I actually, I laugh, I showed it on a screen.
I'm sorry, when you say "do" a bunch of boilers, what does that mean? You mean that we're operating a boiler for the heating of the building, or what does that mean?
Yeah. So, what would happen is, you have boilers in a building that are old and need to be replaced. What we, what we would do with, you know, with your agreement, is we would put in all-new boilers, the ones that you want. In other words, not ones that we're saying, and then, based on our cost, we would show you on a big, giant spreadsheet like this, we would show you what all of our costs are, so it's all meant to be very, very transparent, including our investor charges, what the investors get, and we would show you that, and then from that, we then calculate how much we need to get from you per month to make all those numbers work out, and what we found is that usage fee, that's what it is per month, that usage fee ends up being less than what you would have to pay if you're going to have to do all the things, the city has to do it themselves. And if we can't prove that, then it's not a good project, but it usually works out that way.
An answer? Councilwoman Gussi?
Are you talking about any solar products?
We love solar. The challenge with solar is, well, the answer is not right now, and the reason, and we want you to know that we're very pro-solar, in fact, some of our founders were involved in some of the biggest solar projects. The challenge with solar is the payback period, the amount of years, can be between seven and 15 years for payback. So, we're trying to find ways to do solar, although right now, things like lighting, HVAC, water, irrigation, pumps, motors, those tend to be paybacks between three and eight or nine years, and so economically, it's better for Maricopa and for us to do those projects, but we're hoping to do solar to find a way. It just means that the agreements are going to be much longer, and it doesn't work perfectly with our model right now, but we're hoping, so I don't want to exclude it. We love it.
And one last question is, when we invited, I guess this is for the council and our city manager, when we invited them, did we have a project in mind? No?
No, in fact, the idea was just to listen and learn about it, and so, you know, we spent quite a bit of time on the whiteboard upstairs trying to analyze numbers and explain this in depth and in detail, and, you know, it was all very conceptual, because we don't have a project in mind, but just like you said, until we give permission to kind of turn them loose to say, "We'll find something here. Is there something, and is it worth pursuing beyond that point?" And we just don't know, we don't know.
If I may, Mayor, we'd be very eager with when it's the right time to sit down with the people you say we should and explore projects. This, that's like one of the most fun things for us to do, so we're ready to do that whenever you'd like to.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I think that, I just want to be clear on what the next steps would be. If the council agrees that this process seems reasonable to- If the council agrees that this process seems reasonable to pursue, then we still have to go through a bidding process for it. So we will go out and do a request for qualifications or a request for proposal. That would be the next step, because there are others that are in this market that provide similar services.
Mr. City Manager, may I add something to that? For this, in the state of Arizona, and I'm sure you're familiar with the co-op programs that actually prebid, and it's always your choice, of course, but the state of Arizona, Arizona Department of Corrections and some other units are using a co-op program, because what they've gone, has gone out there and prebid and basically done.
See what else happened.
But of course, we would respect, and we'd also love to be helpful if you decide to do an RFP. We have a lot of experience with that, and we would help you in any way we could.
We certainly would value input. We have to be sensitive that there would be other competitors, and so we want to make sure that the playing field is level.
Of course. Of course. We absolutely respect that.
Council, other questions this time? What do you guys want to do? What would you like to pursue or not pursue? It's up to you.
I think there's a lot more information that I'd want to know. I'm not sure now's the time to do this, but I'm not sure waiting until the next budget cycle is the right time to do it either. So right now, I'm on the fence.
I'm of the opinion that we don't know what we don't know. And so, I mean, the idea is to see if we have projects that could potentially save us money. It doesn't cost us anything. It costs the staff time to put together an RFP, clearly, but, you know, if we're able to move forward, go through that selection, bring back somebody, whether it's, you know, sustainability partners or somebody else, and then they have a few projects that they find that can help save us some money along the way, then we can decide whether we're willing to contract with them and move forward. So just the fact that we select somebody doesn't assure that we're going to do business together, but rather, it moves the process forward in discovery. And that's really what I'm supportive of right now, is the discovery. We, again, we don't know, we don't know. I'd love to see if there's things out there that we could, you know, update, make better, not cost us, and see if that's possible. But again, we don't know until we get into it. That's where I stand.
Barb.
I would like to defer this for time being. I'm not at all comfortable, completely comfortable with the presentation. It sounds good. I don't know enough to give a yes or no tonight. So I'd like to defer this back to the city manager for some further study.
Good.
Yeah. For me, you know, it's never a bad time to save money. So for me, yeah, if we can save money, I'm okay with it. I don't want to spend any money to see if we're going to save money, because I hate studies. I hate all of them, but some of them. So, yeah, if it's no cost involved, except for the RFP, I'm okay with going out and seeing how much you can save us at Copper Sky, or at City Hall, or however, wherever else. So I'm okay with it.
I am.
Councilwoman Lamb.
Sorry, go ahead.
I am also okay with it, considering the fact that it doesn't sound like there's a cost to it at this point, and researching it out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McIsaac.
And having benefited from solar personally, and I've seen the benefits that I've received, although this isn't solar, I definitely want to go back out and see what we could find out.
Yeah, I think the HVAC system here alone, I mean, remember kind of moving into this building and some of the challenges we've had, I think those are things we need to take a look at, because those will be very expensive costs as we move forward. So certainly, I'd love to know more about that. But yes, Councilmember Wade.
So I want to make sure I understand what we're doing. We're just saying that this is something, regardless of who's presenting it to us, that we might like to take advantage of if we had the opportunity to use it. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, we're not committing to any type of contract or any specific anything. We're just simply exploring the numbers and the potential projects. But until we get a company on board to see what that is, we just simply don't know. So that's the goal.
Honorable Mayor and council, what I'm hearing from you is to move forward with the development of an RFP or RFQ, but simultaneously identify additional information for some of you that will provide you with a greater understanding of what this is. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. This is not not complex, as you see by that giant spreadsheet. So certainly something I think it's important that people understand. So we want everyone to be comfortable with it, so that when we do get to the analysis portion, that there is some confidence there. Okay? Anyone else? Any other questions, concerns? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council, we have just about 20 minutes here. We have a few e-session items, so can I have a motion to move to e-session, please?
A motion. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? The motion carries. We're going to e-session. Councilmember Smith, we'll contact you shortly.